Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting, Thursday, October 7th, 2021. I call our meeting to order, and I ask that we please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty-
With liberty and justice for all.
I thank you. Our next section would be, any additions or changes to the agenda? Any additions or changes that anybody wants to discuss? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. Our next section is our public comment section. This section of the agenda is reserved for those people in attendance who wish to briefly address the board. The board requests that comments be limited to those to three minutes or less, and people wishing to comment should type "comment" and your name in the chat box, and you will be recognized.
Chairman Larson, we did receive a few letters regarding the Board of Education appointment, and they requested they be read into the record. I don't know if you want to do that now, or if you want to take it up under appointment, which is probably the next agenda item, so.
We can do it under that section, then. Well, you know what? It is public comment, so why don't we do it now?
Okay, would you like me to read those?
If you could, please, that would be fantastic.
Okay. So, the first letter or email is from Nicole Lutko. Mr. Tierney, please have this letter read in at the next VOS meeting. Members of the Board of Selectmen, I'm writing to ask that you strongly consider appointing Ethan Heinen to the vacancy on the Hebron Board of Education. He brings the valuable perspective of education from his vast experience in the field and would be an extremely well-qualified member. Thank you, Nicole Lutko, parent of two children at Hebron Elementary School, 51 Coats Farm Road. The next one is from Erin Bousier. Esteemed members of the Hebron Board of Selectmen, my name is Erin Bousier. I live on Wall Street in Hebron. I ask that this letter be read out loud and into the minutes during the public comment portion of the Board of Selectmen meeting of October 7th, 2021. At the recent Board of Selectmen meeting, I was delighted to hear a comment made by one of the members of the board. It was indicated that the board prides themselves on being bipartisan, a group of people trying to do what is best for the town, not Republicans or Democrats. Well, today, I challenge the board to show that their actions back up their words. Tonight, we are provided with an opportunity to truly do what is right for our town, more importantly, the children of our town, as well as the teachers and administrators who work so diligently to provide our children with the kind of educations that bring people to Hebron. Two people have stepped up to answer the call to serve on the Hebron Board of Education. At this time, I implore the board to consider each of these men as individuals and base their vote on credentials, not the R or the D next to their names. None of that should matter when we are talking about our children and our schools. While I know such an appointment may go against the grain, which may be uncomfortable for some of the Board of Selectmen, I truly believe appointing Ethan Heinen is in the best interests of our children. I am sure after reading his qualifications and experience, the board will be hard-pressed to disagree with me. I feel we would be doing our children and our schools a disservice by not appointing Ethan Heinen. We hear time and time again that one of the reasons people move to and remain in Hebron is for the schools. With a child currently in the school system, I feel it is imperative that we put our best foot forward when selecting the next Board of Education member. Ethan Heinen has an extensive background in education encompassing 23 years of experience. He has held numerous leadership roles, serving as a department chairperson overseeing faculty, day-to-day operations such as budgeting and scheduling, as well as addressing the specific needs of several programs. Ethan Heinen knows the value of education, as well as the importance of the position he is seeking. His resume speaks for itself, and I ask, I again ask the Board of Selectmen, with this opportunity to do the right thing, our children are watching. The next one is from Nicole Matthews. Dear Board members, my name is Nicole Matthews, and I reside at 60 Old Daniels Lane in Amston. I request that this letter be read aloud and into the minutes of the October 7th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. I am writing regarding the open seat on the Hebron Board of Ed following the resignation of Keith Pettit and my support of Ethan Heinen, the DTC-endorsed candidate. Ethan not only has an outstanding background in education and leadership, he is an active member of our community whose family chose Hebron as their home, in large part due to our excellent school system. Ethan has been an educator for 23 years, first teaching high school students and moving on to higher education. He holds a PhD in Educational Policy Studies, is an associate professor of educational leadership at CCSU, and served as department chair overseeing 13 full-time faculty members and more than 20 adjunct professors. In addition to being a proven leader, he is widely published in his field. While the open seat on the board was vacated by an elected Republican, I am asking the Board of Selectmen to put aside party affiliation and appoint the most qualified individual. Boards of Education should be focusing on education, safety, and progress. At a time when our most vulnerable citizens are at great risk of falling prey to anti-science rhetoric, we need strong competent leadership on Boards of Education across this entire country. I was proud to join the DTC in an unanimous vote to endorse Ethan's appointment to the Hebron Board of Ed. I am asking our select persons to see what a truly amazing asset he will be to Hebron Public Schools and to appoint him as a member. And one more, from Mary Ballunus, to the Hebron Town Manager and Board of Selectmen. I write this letter in strong support of the candidacy of Dr. Ethan Heinen for the Hebron Board of Education. I have known Ethan for several years as neighbors and friends, and there could not be a better representative for our children, our teachers and staff, and our community. Ethan is an intelligent, caring, and thoughtful person, and a loving, fully-involved father of two young children. Additionally, he brings many years of experience as a professor of educational leadership, including background in education policy that will provide expertise in this area. Ethan works well with others and is always respectful, making him an ideal candidate for the Hebron Board of Education. Sincerely, Marcy Ballunus, Amston, Connecticut. And that is it.
Okay. Just as a refresher, we had a Republican who did resign due to work, and we did receive two extremely well-qualified candidates. The way that this works, and I'm trying to find it just so everyone knows, and I know it's here. What ends up happening is when a vacancy occurs on a board, and I was hoping to find my time sheet. What ends up happening is it gets put out, there is a, oh, here we are. Thank you for bearing with me as I stumbled along. Resignation from elective office. As the charter requires, any elected official who wishes to resign from his or her elective office shall notify the town clerk. That was done in writing. Filling vacancies of elected office. Upon the filing of a vacancy, per charter, the Board of Selectmen shall notify the chairs of the town committees of the vacancies, which was done. The Board of Selectmen shall direct the town manager to provide notice of the vacancies by the filing of the town clerk, which was done, and that post was posted. The nomination period, which Town Bulletin Board show commenced the 35th day of the notice as required. So, again, all of these items were done, and anyone wishing to, in being appointed to an elected position vacancy, shall complete the following steps. So, these two candidates that we have did fulfill all of those requirements. And we do have, from the two chairmans from the two political parties, the letters of recommendation of their specific candidate. With that, what I would like to do is ask some questions of the two candidates, and I would ask if any of the other members want to also do the same. You know, this is an important position, but like every position, you know, we'll do our best to put in people who, quite literally, we feel are going to be team players. So, does anybody have any questions of these gentlemen? Otherwise, I do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, John?
I'd like to hear from the nominees. I wonder if they can give a brief synopsis of their background and what they expect to bring to the board?
That works.
I'll step up and start that off if you want. My name's Alex Crawford. Well, before that, I want to tip my cap to Ethan. You know, you have a hell of a resume yourself, so, so, here's to that. So, back to me. Oh, my name's Alex Crawford. I moved to Hebron about six years ago with my wife Taylor and one child and a dog. Since then, we have grown our family to four children. We had three boys, and then we had a bit of a COVID hiccup. We got the, my wife got her girl. So, we now have four kids. Back up to the reason why we came to this town, we had lived in East Hampton before that and decided we wanted to move to a town that offered us a little bit more, a little bit more space and an improved education system, while East Hampton is still a very good system in themselves. My background, I come from this very strong lineage of family educators, grandparents. My mother was an educator for 43 years. My wife is a teacher. My wife's, my in-laws are both, were both educators in the Waterbury School System. So, I know that field well through them. I did not embark on a career in education. We clearly have that covered in our family. I am in the life insurance industry, currently a vice president of underwriting for a large carrier based out of Birmingham, Alabama. Right now, I manage several employees, actuaries, medical underwriters, financial underwriters. It requires a lot of collaboration and a lot of teamwork to create success from a financial What I can bring to this board, I think, is an unbiased opinion. You know, I get stuck sometimes with politics and whether or not I believe it belongs in the school system. I don't really think it does. I don't think that's a platform for politics. I think it requires a strong team concept to get, to get things done in the best interest of our children. Yeah, that's, that's what I, what my attributes, what I think that I can bring to the table.
Okay, thank you. Ethan, please.
Okay, sure. First, thanks for the nice introductions. Thanks for having me here tonight. Alex, I don't know if you remember me from pickups at the pre-K, which seems like a very, very long time ago now, and I'm glad to hear that your family's doing well. As far as my resume, I think I covered pretty, pretty well in the, in the letters. I am a professor, associate professor of educational leadership at Central Connecticut State University. My tenure as department chair has concluded, and now I am the coordinator of our sixth year program, which prepares school leaders for primarily assistant principals and principals, but also a growing number of department chairs, athletic directors, and various kinds of instructional coaches. I also teach in our EDD program and a little bit in our O93 Superintendent License Your Program. The, my full resume is available, so I encourage you to take a look at that. A little bit about myself, which I think is more probably appropriate right now. I also have two small children. They're nine and six, so they're in both Gilead and HES. We, like Alex, like many residents of Hebron, we're here because of the schools. My kids have had an amazing experience in the schools here, and that includes during the pandemic and watching the teachers really step up to meet those challenges has been encouraging and has really prompted me also and many other people to really get the job done that needs to be done. As far as the qualifications that go beyond what's on the resume, I really do, I do echo the politics and their place in the system. They're not going anywhere, and that's okay, but working in higher ed, it's a constant, it's a constant struggle to work through the politics, and it can be done. And my job, when I had been successful in my job, it's been because I've been able to encourage people to collaborate, and I think that's the strong, I think that's what we need now. That was true before the pandemic. It's going to remain true after the pandemic. The past 18 months have shown me more what we can do together than ever before. So, I'll conclude there. I know everybody's time is precious, and again, I thank all of you for having me out here tonight, and I'll sign off there for now and take some questions.
Okay. Well, as I said, I have three questions that I'd like each of you to answer, please. The first one is, where do you see education going in the future, at least on the elementary level?
Alex, we didn't rehearse this beforehand, so I don't know if you want to go back and forth. I'll just step in here. We can just go back. Does that work for you?
Yes, please.
Okay. Can you just, can you just repeat the question for me one time? In the spirit of while we're all here, I got interrupted by a child just now, even though I told them how important it was to be on this call.
Where do you see education going in the future?
Okay, that's a great question. Oh, I'm sorry, was there a second part to it also?
No, no.
Okay. I see it, I see it improving. I think that we're, I think we're learning a lot from the pandemic. I think that we see what teachers can do under a strong leadership and of their own volition in terms of using their discretion in classrooms to make good decisions. This all happened on a dime, and I used to be a teacher, and I still am. It's not the same as when I was in K-12, and I think that the trait that has really emerged over the past year and a half and has always been true is adaptability, and I think that's where we're headed in terms of education, is becoming more fluid, becoming more open to the environment, meaning having more stakeholder input into how things are done and how they get done. And I think the last thing, and I could, I could talk all night on this question, and I won't do that. I also think that we are going to progressively and somewhat aggressively pursue the social emotional health of our children and of our teachers. I think that, again, I don't want to focus too much on the pandemic because that can be a little short-sighted, but, but raising kids that can be resilient and kind and able to stand up for themselves and others, that's, that's the piece that I think public education is really addressing, and I think that that's our future.
Yeah. To take it from there, I don't agree with anything, I mean, don't, don't disagree with anything that Ethan says. You know, Dr. Baird and Katie, I've relayed to them several times that I think they did an exceptional job handling the pandemic and the remote organization, really, in weeks' time. I think our town was, was a model that probably should have been followed across the state. I think the waters that they had to traverse, I don't, I would not want their job any day of the week, what they had to do. One of the best things that they handled was their communication, which was key. They were clear. They frequently communicated what the plan was, so really, nothing was left up in the air to question there. I think for the future of our education, educational system, especially at the elementary level, is embracing the technology that we were forced to use throughout the beginning of the pandemic and in the middle of it. You know, I see it in my own kids coming home with Chromebooks now. They'll hop on them and work on math projects, math games, versus sitting on an iPad for, you know, for half hour, 45 minutes, watching something that's non-educational. So, just introducing those types of things at such a young age is so fun for them that I think we are embracing it, and I don't see why we shouldn't. You saw it several times. Think about snow days, you know, while having the fun of a snow day, I'm all for, and I think, I think to a certain extent, children across the country should still have designated snow days, as we did growing up. But that said, if we're looking at a bad winter with several, several snow days, there you go, you got technology to offer remote learning and save kids from going too deep into the summer. So, that would, that would be my, my future outlook on those elementary system would be to embrace the technology.
Thank you. My next question, what, if any, changes in the curriculum would you advocate for?
All right, let me take it either this time?
If we were going back and forth, I was gonna, I was gonna let you go first on this one, but I can go either way.
Gosh, Mr. Larson, I honestly don't think there needs to be a whole hell of a lot, pardon my French, regarding the curriculum that I've, that I've seen at least. You know, our kids are progressing nicely. We now have three in the, in the Gilead system. We have had educators that I've raved about, all the way up the ladder. I, you know, until I did a deeper dive into the curriculum, I don't want to speak to something that I do not know well enough. This is something I would really feel the need to research a little bit better, but I, I have no concerns from my viewpoints right now.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I think after 18 months, I don't remember my microphone. Mr. Larson, thank you again for the question. So, this is a, this is a hard question. Things, issues involving curriculum tend to be, some can be a little bit not as intrusive in people's thinking and other times much more so. I'm going to answer your question this way, because I agree with Alex. My experience through my children in the school system has been fantastic. So, I don't want to advocate for changes in the event that it sounds like I've been, I've been not happy with what's there. What I do know over my work, particularly as department chair overseeing curriculum matters, the better way, I think, to look at this is not how curriculum changes, but how it evolves over time. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna piggyback on my answer from before a little bit, which I think that building in social and emotional learning resources into the curriculum, which is really already happening, I think will continue to accelerate. I think it would be a good idea to have teachers be able to evaluate that kind of progress a bit more as well, and again, I think that we are going in that direction. As far as other curricular changes, it's not too early to think about foreign language acquisition in, in the K through 6 curriculum as well, and again, that's there. With any curriculum change, there's always this like kind of Jenga thing going on where you're trying to figure out, you move one piece, it sets off another piece. If I were on the board, the discussions that I would like to have would be very broad to begin with, and then start to drill down on the particular changes. The one that I would, the one that I would start with first and foremost would be building in the social emotional learning more explicitly, I think is the right word, into the existing curriculum. That's, that's the one change. There could be others, but just to demonstrate my thinking on this, I'll go with that one for now. Thanks, Mr. Larson.
Okay. My last question, how do you see the interaction with other town boards and commissions?
How, how do I?
How do you see the interaction, the board's interaction with other towns and town boards and commissions?
Dr. Heinen?
Yep.
Example, over in Marlboro?
Okay, yeah, I think I was gonna ask for an example, if that's okay.
I'll, yeah, I'll take it. You want me to take it, Ethan?
No, I can, I can take it. I just, I didn't know if you're, I wasn't sure if there was like a bit of a follow-up there. As far as, as far, again, I'll speak to my earlier point. I think that we're, we're better together, we can learn from each other. My experience in this is working with and training superintendents who do this by necessity. They all work, they all work across, they all, they all work across districts. There is a lot to be learned from the efforts that have, that have been undergone in one district, especially if it's similar to the one in which we're in right now. So, there are lessons to be learned, especially since we've all gotten so used to, I guess this is in Zoom, but on virtual calls, there is a bit of a, there, the, the sort of, there's a little bit of a collapsing of the logistical barriers that were there before. It's much easier to access curriculum, it's much easier to be in contact. My, my sense on that is, is that that's an opportunity, which is how I tend to look at all of these things, is where is the opportunity? How do you build on it? Thanks, Mr. Larson.
Yeah, so, I agree again. You know, being part of a regional school system, I think, is very unique and beneficial. It opens the doors to a lot more than, than a singular, you know, town school. I think communication is key between the three, and also collaboration, you know, building, building off of each other, growing together. You know, ultimately, when we combine at the Ram High School level, it's, these kids are all getting together, you know? So, so I think communicating under one umbrella together and effectively, locating problems, figuring out how we can improve those problems or resolve them, investing in, you know, investing in the future of our children as much as we can, whether it be Andover, Marlboro, or Hebron. That's where I stand.
I have, I have no idea if I'm breaking format here, but could I, could I add to my answer from before just a bit?
Sure.
Okay. I think that the collaborative piece that, that I know more from the leaders that I work with in the field, that, to answer your question with more specificity, which I think is helpful, I think it's special education. I think that's, I think that's where we need to build on one another, particularly since they're, they're going to end up at the same school within a matter of years. So, that's my more specific answer. It was coming to me earlier, and I just had a hard time sort of honing in on it. Thank, thank you for the extra minute. Thank, thank you for the extra minute.
Okay.
Chairman, anybody?
Yeah, it's John.
Oh, yes, sir.
I I do have three questions. It won't take too long. Let's just start with Alex. You know, leadership in schools is is so important. How will you add to the leadership component in the schools as a board member? And what's your background in that?
So I, my, my present, my present job duties, I I am in in charge of leading and motivating several adults, obviously, so that's I consider myself a very personable person. I'm an extreme team player. You know, I I yeah, I I I have shown strong motivational skills to to provide results. And I see no, I see myself bringing the same, the same efforts to to this board. Ethan?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Collins. So I, as far as leadership's complicated, it's not always the same, but I think there are a few things that do remain the same across, you know, across contexts. And I would, I would say the, I'll try to make this not vague and by adding an example, hopefully. I think, I think leaders are, they need to be positioned to be successful. The first aspect of that is what I do every day, which is training them in the first place. That training is is by, is by default always somewhat incomplete, because the real world is not going to map perfectly onto the training that you had. That's part of the training to teach them to be adaptable, and that's, that's will take you a long way, and experience will also. But it's the folks around the leaders who can do a lot to help them be successful. And that's really two things, which is creating opportunities, recognizing opportunities, and removing obstacles. So in the case of, I'll I'll build on my example about the S E L curriculum. Some obstacles there are going to be logistical, I think. So a good leadership orientation around social emotional learning. The obstacles that exist in the sort of nuts and bolts of the curriculum, if you can remove those obstacles, you position the leader to be successful within that particular endeavor. Or building on my special education example, if you can enhance the communication across districts, then you help to get the message out, you help to help them advance their agenda. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
So I'll start with Ethan. The second question is about safety. You know, we've invested in SROs for elementary school. Um, what's your background and and what's your philosophy about keeping the school safe?
I'm sure, thank you. I I, that question needed to to be asked, for sure. First thing, I can tell you that my my children, probably like everyone else, love Officer Reagan. We see him, we see him every day. Uh, my kids are on the bus now, so I kind of miss seeing him in the morning. He's also one SRO for two, for two schools. The particulars of that, I would, I think I would need to learn more from the board in terms of the funding and 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 the job description and what goes on day to day. But let me, let me reframe this a little bit, if I might. I've I've published in the area of school safety. Um, it's been a few years, I haven't published much of anything for a while since I was department chair, because that's such a demanding job. School safety issues existed before the pandemic, and they're going to exist after the pandemic. And the looking to try to isolate certain variables in an effort to improve school safety can perhaps not be the best place to start. Instead, take a step back and think about safety as a holistic endeavor. How are we keeping our kids physically safe? How are we keeping them intellectually safe? What needs to go into the efforts to ensure that that happens? And SRO is is obviously a vital component to that. However, the SRO is going to work within an environment and a school culture that will support or inhibit his or her work. So I would approach the SRO safety question in tandem. Um, I wouldn't want to isolate the variable of a school resource officer without considering the larger context in which he or she works. And that can be accomplished by by doing some research, by asking around, getting getting opinions and experiences. And then, after having a broader view of the issue, come back and see what particulars need to be addressed.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Yeah, my feelings about the resource officers are very similar. I don't see if the resources that are there to provide more safety at these schools to our children, then I I think the answer is simple, you know, if the funds are available, then then we should make it happen. Again, a deeper dive into their day to day duties would be warranted. However, again, I fall back to any and all ways, we can, we can offer some protection at at the assist, at these school systems, so.
Okay, great. So last question is about resources. I I think both of your wives are teachers. Is that right? I think that's right. Okay, great. You know, teachers, getting the the best teachers is, I think, fundamental to the elementary school. That was my experience with kids. You know, there's, there's, it's an art, it's a, it's training. What can you do, what will you do to bring great teachers to Hebron? What 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 resources do you have to bring great teachers to Hebron?
So I'll take it, Ethan. Uh, I I think I think right now, we we express and urge teachers to to look at our track record. You know, like Ethan said, and and I said prior, we haven't had poor experiences really at all with any education, any educators that we've, we've seen at the school system, and that includes, you know, Dr. Baird and Katie. I think we we bring quality educators in and retain that talent by, first off, compensating them appropriately. I am not privy to exactly where our school system stands on that list, but I, but I know that that was a driving factor, a tough decision for my wife to make in changing school systems from her first, from her first position. Our, you know, our facilities are excellent. We have a beautiful high school. We have, we have that that turf project that's on the docket to be voted on. Um, I think, again, it falls back to us being a regionalized school school system. We have a unique opportunity to I think to to provide more for for our our children as as they age through the systems. And I would, I would portray that on future candidates for for education positions in our towns.
Great. And Ethan, thank you so much.
Yeah, I always stress with our students that there are a lot of things out of your control. You know, if you take over a new leadership position, for example, the teachers that are there, the teachers that are there. Um, and that can, that can be a great thing. It can be a challenge sometimes. The, my point is that the opportunity, when you hire somebody, is entirely under your control. And that can have far reaching consequences. And all of the, 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 the amount of effort you put into hiring should be the very most effort that you can afford and live with, because it is such an important decision. As is mentoring after this person has been hired. As far as, as far as finding the teaching, the question was about teachers specifically, correct?
Yes, teachers and resources.
So I I would say that the, can, can, when you consider hiring, you think about hiring across the board for teachers, for paras, for administrators, and you have the same kind of vigilance in terms of what you're looking for and what you're hoping to achieve. The, the, the pay scale and Hebrew, and Hebrew schools is not the same as it is at Ram. There's a bit of an issue with Ram in terms of the pay there. This isn't a Ram school board meeting, so I won't go there, but it's a bit of an issue. I say a bit of an issue, but not much of an issue, because what attracts people to Ram and to Hebron schools are the schools in the community. And what we've done, and I don't know if anybody would be familiar with this, we actually, in terms of leadership, we actually ran a, a six year off campus cohort, which we actually ran it through the East Con Regional Education Service Center. And that directly produced and contributed to the leadership that we see in Hebron. Again, I don't want to speak too much about Ram, but all three administrators in that school were actually former students of mine. Tom Baird was a former student of mine also, as was Stephanie DeLucia also. So in that, in the latter case, that was a, that was a retention situation, and 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 I wish her the best, but I also wish that she could have stayed. So what I'm getting at here is that you you build on the reputation of the community. You you network with people so that you can get teachers early in the game, hire them before somebody else does. And this wasn't exactly your question, but I think it's important to mention, which is the immediate and long term mentoring and follow up after hiring is extremely important. Most teachers are going to lose their, most, if the teachers are going to leave, they're not going to do it a year fourteen, they're going to do it very early in their career. If you want to keep them, then invest in them. If the resources to invest in them financially are limited, there are other options, invest in them as people, invest in them as educators, trust and value in their work and build on their expertise. Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Okay, I thank you both, two extraordinary individuals. I feel both of you are extraordinarily talented and it's, it's hard when you have two great people vying for the same position. You know, you know, I do know there's apparently potentially an opening at Ram that may be coming up too in the future. That being said, we need to make a decision. As I said, it was a seat that was held by Republican. And historically, we do try to maintain the voters' wishes. But that being said, the easiest way is for me to just ask everyone, you know, whether Alex or Ethan, and we'll see where it falls.
I don't, I'm not sure of the protocol. Do you want me and Alex in the, in a breakout room or anything while you do this? I'm I'm good either way.
I don't think so. I, I don't have, yeah. John?
Oh, are we discussing it, or?
As I say, I think at this point, we need to make a decision.
I can read the agenda. I'd love to hear what people with the other board members think about the opportunity. Like, I'd like to hear, you know, why they will vote in a particular way.
I think that that is, you can ask them if they want to state why they're voting their particular way, but that is their own personal choice.
Okay, let me, let me, let me go first then, and if anybody wants.
I'd like to interrupt you both and tell you that Andy, our town manager, has been trying to get the floor, and we probably want to listen to him, Dan.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. If I'm recognized by the chairman, all I was going to do was read the agenda item, then you guys can handle the meeting all you want. Now that the, it appears this kind of interview process was somewhat over. Under item six A in the agenda, appointments and resignations from the Hebron Board of Education appointment. Two people have come forward expressing interest in filling the Hebron Board of Education vacancy left by Keith Pettit's recent resignation. Attaches correspondent from Alex Crawford are expressing interest in being appointed and an endorsement from the Hebron Republican Town Committee. Also attaches a letter from Ethan Hyman D. expressing his interest in endorsement from the Democratic Town Committee. And then, of course, there's a proposed motion below that.
Mr. Chairman?
Chairman?
Yes.
I'll put for a motion. Could you put that back up, Andy, if that's all right?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, before we make that motion, I think John's statement is fair that if we have a comment to make about the candidates and why we're choosing them, we should, and I choose to do that.
Okay.
Excellent.
I think that should go before the motion.
Yeah.
Do we wait for the motion?
Good, please do.
And John, just to let you know, I I agree. I think it's an opportunity for us to sort of talk through the process, so I appreciate that opportunity.
In in terms of passing a test of reasonableness and dedication to the town and its welfare, both candidates are superb. I would echo what Dan said. I wish we had more openings, and Ram is going to be opening up soon. So that's something to consider. But I think it rare that any board of education would find somebody of Ethan's capabilities to to want to join and contribute. I think the town is very lucky. I mean, how many people have on their board of education, somebody who actually has greater qualifications than the superintendent and all the principals, and he's the one who trained them? So who would better understand how an educational system works than Ethan? It makes up a a good collection when you have parents, when you have people of diverse backgrounds. Very rarely do you have an educator of Ethan's competency on a board. So for me, this is a no brainer. Ethan is the guy. No, no disrespect to Alex. I wish there were two openings. And to further state about educators, Ethan's wife is is a chemistry teacher at Ram, my stepson's favorite teacher. He asked her for his recommendation letter to W P I, and he got in. So I guess we have to say thanks to Ethan and his wife and his family. She she's a well respected, fantastic teacher in in the Ram community, and that's kind of echoing off. You have to get great teachers. And I really like the part about the emotional, social learning part, because if you don't have empathetic kids who are resilient and can contribute to to a positive culture in their school, and they're just coming out passing tests, what a great disservice you're doing to 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 your students. So Ethan, I was very impressed when you said that. And for for me, Ethan is is the person. Thank you.
Okay, John. John, you want to go next?
I'll, I'll wait. I've spoken, so if Peter or Gail wants to talk.
Peter?
Sorry about that. Thank you. My back's killing me, so I put myself, I hide myself, so I can lay on the floor for a bit, so I apologize for that. I, I appreciate, John, you giving us an opportunity to sort of continue the discussion, because I struggle a little bit with this, because my bias is to support the original ten of the voting public when it comes to replacing an elected official midterm, regardless of party, because I I think of board composition, I think of the folks that intended to vote for maybe not the individual, but an individual, so much as maybe the individual's affiliation. So I'm trying to respect the voter's rights when it comes to, or the voter's bias when it comes to thinking about a midterm versus if it was a regular, a a regular election. And I wish you both were on the ballot November second, but that that being what it is. So I also, I'm interested in the the opinions, and Mark, I appreciate your opinion very much, is is because it might be an opportunity to think about somebody who is so qualified that we don't maybe normally have that level of opportunity. But again, I, I'm just, I wanted to express how I think about this, not so much who's better, but sort of thinking about it as a replacement in the midterm. And that's in my historic thought process when it comes to that. But again, an opportunity to consider two very good candidates, and especially, you're at Ethan's background, and we don't have that, so that's something that's really true. So I I thank you both for for stepping up. And the one that doesn't get to join the board in the middle of the term, I obviously strongly recommend that you continue to look for ways to serve our our community as other opportunities present themselves. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Gail.
How rare and how fortunate we are to have two such extremely qualified people looking to fill this seat. But in trying to determine how and who I was going to support, I looked at the fact that this is a midterm, we are trying to get someone into a seat, appoint someone rather than have someone elected by the voters. The voters originally voted for Keith, a Republican. I think that we need to respect that and go along with that, because we're only appointing someone for the balance of the term. There will be, as was said before, an opening at Ram next year, and in two years, the regular municipal election cycle will be coming again. So I think we need to really keep in mind, our job is to keep in mind what the voters originally did. Thank you.
John?
Right, so, you know, as a member of the Democratic Town Committee who has supported Republicans in you know, town elections, I kind of think it's important we get the right person. I think both candidates are excellent candidates, you know, obviously, so whoever said, you know, this is not a ding against anybody. It's an opportunity for the town. So here's what I think, I mean, education's changing really fast now, and if you look at national scores, we had, the test scores are decreasing. The pandemic has had a huge impact on children, and I just think it's an opportunity for us to have a professor of education on the board is something we don't want to waste. He has the pulse on what's happening in education, and he can help guide the superintendent and the board. Second thing is, I think he knows a lot of people in education. You know, he's a professor in Connecticut, and he knows teachers, he trains teachers, so he's a pipeline in himself. He can recruit good teachers, and like I said, you know, my experience with my kids is, you know, you get a fabulous teacher and that makes all the difference in the world. You know, there are teachers that are good, but when you get a fabulous one, well, oh my God, it changes a kid's life. And that's what's important, I think, recruiting the best teachers, recruiting sympathetic and intelligent and wonderful teachers. And then, you know, finally, his selection won't change the balance of the Board of Education. Still going to be a Republican majority, although I'm not sure that matters since they selected a Democrat to be a chairperson. So I think we should select whoever's going to help Hebron the most, you know, I think it could be, who knows, I mean, but obviously, I think Alex would help us, and I appreciate his dedication, but you know, I think Ethan, on the balance, has the time, he's not a chair anymore, which is great, of his department, but he brings some incredible strengths, and so I'm going to vote for him. Thank you both, though.
Thank you, awesome.
I also agree with Gail. I think we owe it to the voters a little bit. My other thing is I would love to see Ethan literally on the Ram board. I think that would be an incredible fit, and I think on that position, he could do so much more good for the town and, in fact, the towns. You know, long range, I still keep in the back of my mind the fact that at one point in time, the state was talking about creating minimum-sized school districts. I do not believe that that is a dead issue. I think that that is something that down the line is going to have to be considered, where these different smaller school numbers combine. And I really think that in that position at the Ram level where we already have a three-town compact, I think long-term, we as a town need to start thinking about that as a direction. And I think Ethan, if we can get him on that Ram board, would be a win for the three towns. I just, I think it warrants us keeping that door open. I know Connecticut, you know, New England, everybody wants to have all their own little bells and their own little whistles, but I think those days are going to be coming to an end. And I would love to see Ethan leading that charge. And I think from the Ram board is the direction that that would have to come from. I'll read a motion, and we'll see how it goes. Move the Hebron Board, is there any more discussion before I do this?
Just briefly, you know, I think Keith had it. People voted for Keith because of Keith Pettit, I think it was overwhelming. I'd like to think that we could vote for the person here, but thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As most everybody knows from my past feelings about everything, party doesn't matter a lick to me. I didn't even know Ethan was a Democrat, I don't know what Ethan is. I didn't know what Alex was either. This should be for the best person, the best qualified person, not the best person in terms of values. The best qualified individual for this is obviously Ethan. And just to go along party lines, just to say that we're keeping the intent of what the voters voted for, they didn't have a choice in voting for these two individuals. So even the case of my wife who's a Ram board member, she's a Democrat. When she leaves and I'm still here at the Board of Selectmen and a Republican who's going to replace her is the person, I'm voting for that Republican, it doesn't matter if the other person's a Democrat, I'm voting for the best person. I think that's what we should do here.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just one more thing, because Ethan's wife is a teacher at Ram, I don't think he's, he'll have a conflict, I think it'll be difficult for him to serve there.
It might be, John.
I was going to say, we have teachers whose spouses are on the Ram board.
We do, Dan, there's an existing board member whose wife works there. I know there's a statute that says if you're a teacher at the school, you can't be a member of the board. But I don't know, there may be some vague conflict.
I'm going to read the motion, and we'll go where it goes. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen, appoint Alex Crawford to run, appoint Alex Crawford to the Hebron Board of Education for the term to run until November 2023. John?
John Collins votes no.
Mark?
Mark Rivera votes no.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, aye.
Congratulations, Alex, and thank you so much, Ethan, it was good to meet you. I hope you are able to serve later.
Yeah, I've heard both directions on the Ram situation. My understanding is that I don't think I can, but then people are, so I'm not entirely sure how that works. I want to thank you all for your time. Alex, I'm going to relay something to you that hopefully you go relate to, which is when I decided to step up and attempt to do this, a lot of people told me like, why would you do it? Why would you, like, you got other things, you got young kids? And I did step up, and Alex, you did the same thing, and a lot of people don't do that. So I'm proud of myself, I'm proud of you for doing it, please serve us well.
My thanks to both of you for taking the time and the effort for this position. We need good people in positions that affect our youngsters.
I thank you, and this is probably the hardest decision I think I've ever had to make on this board. And I hope that you're not a stranger. Echoing Gail's comments, we need great people. And I think you have a wealth of knowledge that, you know, literally two great candidates, and I thank you both for stepping forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Larson. I'm assuming I don't stay for the rest of the meeting, right? I think I'm going to, I think I can still catch my kids before they go to bed, so I think I'm going to do that. So I'm going to sign off, but again, thank you all for your time and all the work that you do.
Yes, thank you all. Thank you all for your time, I look forward to meeting you in person.
Next would be our town managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, excuse me. So as I stated at the last meeting, we're starting to progress into budget season. So with that being said, if the Board of Selectmen could mark their calendars per charter, we have an October meeting that's scheduled for October nineteenth for the joint meeting with the Board of Finance. The regular Board of Selectmen's meeting for the second part of this month is October twenty-first, so there'll be two meetings that week. So please note your calendars, and we'll be sending something out. Some of the activities, I've been working with Code, and they've agreed to work through CCM. CCM is going to put on a series or a bunch of sessions, several, that address the issues that they're looking into for our community, along with all the other communities in the town. So I think I proposed that and sent the structure over, and they liked it. So they attended, I believe, on September twenty-ninth, and they will be coming back to the Board of Selectmen at some point and telling you about their progress and the actual program that this is. I can send some information to the Selectmen through CCM, or you can look it up on their website, but I think it's it's going to be something that's good for both of them and us, it's structured through CCM, and that's going to help quite a bit. We're still working with Eversource and ESC regarding the rates that our buildings are being charged at. We've had made headway, I believe there's two buildings, one being Hebron Elementary School, and then also the Public Works Facility on Old Colchester Road can be changed to the Code Thirty, and we're going to continue to work with them in ESC, I'm sorry, ESC, to see if we can't do that to some of these other ones to make it more beneficial when we do the solar project, so that's ongoing. We are going to be working on a new hire for the Police Department. Jim Tilly, after his years of service, has retired, so we had already gone out and advertised, so we're going to be doing interviews next week for that. So we wish Jim Tilly well, and he served this community very well, so I want to make sure he gets some sort of recognition. And then also, Mark can talk to this later, but Mark has put in his letter of resignation for the end of the year, December thirty-first, so that gives us enough time to start looking for a new SRO as well. So we've been meeting with the superintendents of the two schools and working on a plan and how that's going to look moving forward. And then, of course, we're working with the new town planner, he started on Monday. We've already got a couple grants that we're starting to formulate. He's met some of the players in Hebron, along with the departments and the people that he's going to work with. So he's been quite busy, but he's been well-received thus far, so we wish him well. And then we had a post-meeting with the resident trooper regarding the Hebron affair and some possible changes for how that's going to be covered next year due to the expense. We're going to be working on a municipal town agreement with the local police departments to see if we can't get that cost down with not using resident troopers or state troopers as much. So that was, there was two meetings regarding that. I also had the pleasure of sitting with Brian O'Connell for two hours. We met with the Salmon River Watershed, Brian's a representative for the town of Hebron, along with myself, and we met with all the other towns that belong to that, and we're looking at next steps and how we can make that even more vibrant. They've been doing very good in what they're doing, they don't have a lot of staff or a lot of money, so the funding that we give them is quite helpful, and then they get two interns during the summer months, of course, but they might be looking to step that up a little bit to do even a better job. So there was quite a discussion on that, and it was a good one, so I just want to keep the Selectmen abreast of that. I met with the Town Center Project, mostly Dave Souza, and he's been working with a few of the people there, including Judy, and they've been working on a enhanced envision of what they feel the Town Center could possibly look like. So he had shared that with me, and he wants to maybe start having conversations. I asked him politely, and he agreed that if he wouldn't start with possibly EDC, and then there to the Planning and Zoning Commission to get some fingerprints on it before we go full public with it, because some of the proposed sites and changes involve private properties. I want to make sure that we get the word out before it's not a shock to somebody. But it looks very nice, he did it pro bono, and he's a professional, and we should really appreciate the work that he's done. So if you could wait, that'll be coming shortly, and that'll be coming from the Board of Selectmen. We went over our insurance coverage with Karma this week, we're in pretty good shape there, that's good news. We did get that big check back from them, and hopefully they're in a good position this year, so hopefully we can do the same. But that yet will remain to be seen, but it looks like all indicators are well. Let's see, working with the Public Building Committee on the school roofs, the library roofs, and then, of course, the new Public Works building plans. So we have, the wetlands are defined, they were defined, and then also we're working with the town engineer to do a referral to Shippeau on that property. And that's all I had at this time.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I have a question, Andy. So Dave Souza is a private citizen who's presenting his idea of what the Town Center should look like. How, shouldn't that be a planning and zoning? Isn't that under their purview, not under ours?
It is, he worked with the Town Center Project, and they volunteered, they did it pro bono, so it's just that group's ideas, but that group didn't really want to be the sponsor of it, so Dave came and met with me and showed me the work that they've done, and asked me quite frankly what next steps should be, and I said just that, let's get the planning and zoning involved, along with the Economic Development Commission, both of them, and see, get their thoughts and fingerprints on it before we go anywhere with it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Our next would be, we have no old business, as far as I know. So next would be our, let's see, anybody has anything for old business? Okay, hearing none, new business, we have the We have the approval of the parking lot easement and maintenance agreement for 1416 Main Street.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board of Selectmen. They've been waiting patiently with us. The Tenels are with us. They're the owners of 14 Main Street. The old Gale House, which has been resurrected quite nicely, I might add. And what you have in front of you here tonight is another parking agreement similar to what we did with the Cilios and Matt McCorson to enhance the partnership of the downtown walkability and parking to enhance the businesses and commerce there. So this is something that was promoted by planning and zoning. I think the Tenels have done a wonderful job, and they've come to us to once again look for this type of approval for a shared agreement on that parking lot, which is the same to the one next to it behind Something Simple, McCorson's, and then, of course, across the street at Century 21. And the Town Attorney has looked at this and reviewed it, and it's now in front of you guys for approval. And I hope that you guys would find it in your hearts to approve this for the Tenels.
Okay, I'll read the motion, then we'll open it up for discussion. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen to approve the parking lot easement and maintenance agreement between the grantor, L. and J. Properties LLC, and the grantee, the Town of Hebron, as presented. Opening up for discussion. Is there any discussion?
I have a question, if nobody else has anything.
Sure, go ahead, John.
So they own the property, right?
Yes.
Okay, and we're gonna invest some money so that the public citizens of Hebron can park in that space. There'll be no restrictions.
There's an agreement which is, yes, a shared usage, and then a maintenance agreement as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So all the parking lots in that area have that agreement? So it would be completely unfair not to grant this to the Tenels. And it also opens up a connection between all the parking lots and right to the back and the library. And for those businesses to succeed there, they need access to parking, the patrons need access to parking. I'm in full support of this agreement.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I completely totally agree with you, Mark. I think this has been an incredible benefit for both the businesses and for the town with these agreements, and, you know, the collaboration is one of the things that helps make Hebron work, and especially our downtown. So I totally agree with you. I think this is a win-win for all concerned. So, hearing the motion, no other discussion? All in favor, I signify by saying aye. John?
John Collins, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you.
I'd really like to thank the Tenels, and I don't know if they have anything they want to say, Mr. Chairman. They've been on all night.
Want to say something? Unmute us.
We are unmuted.
Oh, we're unmuted. I would just like to say thank you. We've gotten a lot of support from the Town of Hebron, especially Andy Tierney and Michael Leary before he retired. I hope we can meet the new planner. But we're excited to help enhance the green area, and that's really what our goals are, and and right from the get-go, it seemed like our our ideas matched the ideas of the town, and it's just been a good experience thus far. And we hope that you'll really like what we have when it's finished. We're gonna be enhancing with patios and walkways, and we're even putting in an outdoor pizza oven near a patio area, so it's gonna be a nice place for for the public to hang out as well, and that's what we want, a place that's open to the public and a place for people to congregate. So thank you for all the support.
Okay, one comment on the pizza oven.
Goes by, right, Mark?
One comment on the pizza oven. It's gonna be the happiest place in the world during Maple Fest when it's cold out. We'll have to beat them off.
Sign to Legion Burgers. Legion Burgers first, and then the pizza.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, our next would be the Historic Documents Preservation Program Grant.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman and the board. This would be seeking approval for the Historic Documents Preservation Grant application. You guys historically have done this, attached as an application prepared by Town Clerk Carla Pompawitz for the Connecticut State Library Historic Documents Preservation Program. Targeted grant in the amount of $5,500. A proposal is for the purchase of a replacement of the plotter, scanner, printer, which multiple departments use. So I think that would be a good asset to update that piece of equipment we have with that grant if we receive it.
Okay, and this is a grant that we have gotten in the past, if I remember right, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll read the motion and open it up for discussion. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen to approve the application to the State of Connecticut, Connecticut State Library for the targeted grant fiscal year 2022 Historic Documents Preservation Program in the amount of $5,500, and authorize Town Manager Andrew J. Tierney to apply for, accept, and receive the grant and sign any necessary documents. Any discussion on this motion? Any discussion? Hearing none. John?
John Collins, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Next would be our draft agenda of next, our next October 21st meeting. So again, any changes or whatever, please get it into the Town Hall. Is there any other new business at this time? Hearing none. Our next would be the Consent Agenda items. These are items that are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may or may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. And we have the two items. We have the approval of the minutes of our September 16th, 2021 regular meeting. Excuse me, and the tax refunds as listed. So what's people's pleasure? Hearing none, I am assuming that we will call for the motion as if individually adopted, so move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted, and it'd be the approval of this September 16th, 2021 regular meeting, and as I say, the tax refunds as listed. John?
John Collins, aye.
Mark? You're on mute.
Mark Rivera, aye.
Thank you. Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Our next would be the Laser Reports. Actually, we'll start with Andy, because otherwise I'll forget.
That's okay. They have started on the pump station upgrades. Kevin Kelly's been out this past couple of days, so I'll get the report, the weekly meeting report from them, and I'll send that out to the Board of Selectmen. But we finally get started.
Okay.
Andy, I have a question about that. Do they foresee additional work on the sewers beyond the pumps?
For this project, I think it was a scope, but you talked in the actual WPCA Board Commission?
Yeah, I mean, they have a problem with water leaking in. That's costing a lot of money. Are they gonna fix that?
I know, I know what we're dealing with right now. They have two issues, one with the Town of Lebanon and trying to settle how the flows monitored, the EDUs. But also, more importantly, there was a break over by the airline trail in Colchester, and it was rather expensive. So we're put a joint letter together, and we're trying to get the insurance to pay for that, but that that was over a million-dollar repair, and that would have to be divided up amongst the towns on the sewer. So I know they're diligently working on those two issues. I'd have to have them or Kevin get back to us on the infiltration and what they plan on doing in regards to that. I know they replaced the meters, and that supposedly cleared up some inaccuracies, but I don't know where it stands, John, to be honest.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mark?
There was actually a Ram Board of Ed meeting going on in the other room while I was on this, and I just asked Jessica if there's anything that I needed to report, and she said nothing of great consequence, other than they're still having transportation issues because they're having trouble hiring bus drivers. So that's a difficulty they're trying to overcome at this time. Still struggling with all, having all the students back in school for the first time in a prolonged period of time, so it's school back as usual again. And other than that, I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Gail?
Okay, the this is a busy time for the Douglas Library. The Teen Advisory Group has been creating a haunted house, which will be accessed by the public on the day of the Harvest Moon Affair, which is October 23rd. And they are looking for more teenagers to help out with decorations, to play ghouls and the like. If you go out on the library website, you can learn more about it. Storytime is back in person on Tuesday and Thursday mornings, and it's been well received. And October 12th, I mentioned before, they're going to have a Medicare presentation to give people information, those who have never been in the program before, or those who are thinking of some changes. So that will be October 12th at 6:00 PM. The Senior Center is accepting applications for the Connecticut Energy Assistant Program. And everyone should be aware that Medicare Open Enrollment is from October 15th to December 7th. The Service, the Senior Center is able to make an appointment with you and assist you in making the best decision for which program you sign up for. The Hebron Board of Ed, which will meet next Thursday. In the meantime, Wayne DeRosa, the Facilities Director for 31 years, has retired, and the board has thanked him for his service. The District Advancement Plan has begun, and that, very important, it includes professional development in the scheme curriculum. Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board of Finance, a couple of notes, just continuing to follow up on the on old business on the audit, and we had talked about that before. Just wrapping up the outstanding items, there was one still open item regarding trying to reconcile an old cemetery fund, so that's sort of, I think, the last item that needs to be reconciled, and that might not be cleared up in the near future. But nonetheless, that cleanup is going well. The auditors will be back in, you know, this month, so for the 2020-2021 audit, so that process continues, but in very good shape going forward there, so a good update on that. Some discussion on the debt management and the unassigned fund balance and discussions sort of around after the audit's completed, potentially continuing to foster the support of how to I guess officially and consistently look at the unassigned fund balance and potentially make adjustments. So more discussion around that, but good discussion there. And there was just one comment, which I continue to be interested in, and confirmation that there's no, we still have no direction from the appropriate state and/or federal authorities on how we can use those COVID funds. That's still an outstanding item. We've talked about that probably every every month or so, and so that's still an open item. Funds need to be, we need to understand what we can do with those funds, so because they're available. So that was that, and and then on Parks and Rec, another presentation, there's multiple presentations on bringing disc golf to Hebron. So continued discussions by some some very passionate young folks in town to to bring that as some additional recreation. So I think I mentioned that before, but this is another presentation on that, so the commission has some good questions, a lot more information, and that needs to be brought forward, and there will be a series of approvals and all sorts of other items, but good dialogue about how we can bring more recreation into the town and potentially use some of our our space to provide some good recreation, but a lot more work to do, but interesting enough to note. Always an update on the rec programs. So they've got some good programs going with the Running Club and Youth Tennis has started, and there's a lot of good stuff there. The directors continuing to push youth basketball discussions, thinking about adding Andover to the Hebron leagues, but still more to do there, and the director updated on the Connecticut Trail Grant. People talked about it earlier, and then oh, this was something that was interesting. I guess there was some discussion or continuing discussion on pushing for some non-smoking policy in town parks. And the park policy updated five years ago didn't include that, and I think there was some issues around thinking about how to enforce that, so that's being revisited. I know that would take some continued discussion, but I thought that was an interesting note, and the Parks and Rec Commission still has two openings, so if anyone knows anybody interested in serving in that capacity, it's a well-run commission and very interesting, and so think about that for the folks that you might know that are willing to serve. Thank you.
Okay. John?
So we met for open space. And just to remind everybody, we did pass the, in the town meeting, the acquisition of the Bernstein, the other property. I think it's a fantastic achievement of the board, and thank you very much, everybody. It passed 49 to 1. I want to call out Keith Pettit, because I thought it took a lot of courage for him to say no, and it made me think about why he said no, and I think I have some idea. I think he's concerned that we're buying land that could be used for economic development, which I don't think is actually happening, but we had a discussion about the importance of what's happening in other places like Virginia and that are nice like Hebron, and how they're, they are using ecotourism and agrotourism as a real draw to their towns. I know in Madison County, Virginia, which has about the same population as Hebron, that is their main economic driver, ecotourism and agrotourism. And so, open space is important in that, and, you know, the town lands are important in that. I I think that can be a driver. Pat Gallagher was there. That's the new planning director's name, I think. And so everybody got to meet him, and the open space committee, just, we talked a little bit about the the St. Peters acquisition and, you know, going forward with that. You know, I think the committee will approve the $7,500 open space share with them. That's about it.
Could I ask John, could I ask John a question, please?
Sure.
Yeah.
Sorry, John, I keep myself. Could you give some examples of that, you know, that, the eco and agrotourism that you cited in terms of, you know, how do you, how would you see that as an example in our community? Very interesting. So I just was hoping you could share a couple.
Although, yeah, so these farms, you know, there's farms in rural areas, you have farms. And now all of them are doing very well, although I got to tell you, hay is, is huge now. But, so these farms are converted to destinations and people from the cities want to come out to Airbnbs on these, on these properties, you know. Hebron does, actually, we are zoned to allow people to build these Airbnbs on the properties. And we could actually do more if we wanted. But there's a real, you know, now the people moving from the city to rural areas, they want the, the opportunity to, to, you know, commune with nature, whatever, hike. And so this really, these really rural communities, I'm more familiar with Virginia, have, which were all beef cattle, I mean, they're beef and hay and a little bit of horses, are now like places, destination, places of destination where people go to their Airbnb, beer, Airbnbs. They look at, you know, they may have some grapes there on, on the property that they put up. They may have pumpkins. They'll definitely have cows and, and horses and that sort of thing. And they're making on mint. They're, this is, this is huge. It's, it's the way, you know, things are changing now. People are getting out, they want to get out of the city. And one way is, is through this eco-tourism, they call it, and agrotourism. And it's not, it's not like some hippie thing. These, these communities are all like, you want to talk about Republican? This is Trump country. So I mean, it's, and it's something, you know, Hebron should think about, I think.
Thank you. I appreciate that additional information. Thank you.
As I say, I think we've kind of gone along a lot of that same line with the rails, the trails and, you know, a lot of the paths that we've put in. So we're kind of, sort of heading in that direction for that type of outdoor activities. So, but thank you for that information. It'd be actually be also interesting to get maybe a couple of those Chamber of Commerce contacts to maybe find out a little bit more on how they manage some of that, that type of, of industry.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I'd definitely do that and a lot of it has to do with zoning and, and, you know, and, yeah, I'll get that info.
Thank you. Okay, the only thing I've got is with the fire department, they are again going to be doing the senior dinner. And it's again going to be a delivery to the seniors like they did last year, rather than bringing them all into the firehouse to have a sit-down meal. It was discussed and decided that it would be far safer because of COVID to, again, do the delivery option. So again, the seniors are asked to call Sharon at the Senior Center for the reserving of those dinners. For some reason, and I don't have the date, I, what, yes, I do. It's being planned for November twenty-first would be the date that those dinners would be delivered. So again, contact Sharon at the Senior Center and for that reservation. And that's all I have. So. Unless we have public comment?
I think we do.
Okay.
We have one public comment from Tiffany Thiele.
Okay.
Thanks, Donna. Hi, everybody. Sorry, my camera's not working. Tiffany Thiele, six-two-six, Gilliard Street. I just want to express how deeply disappointed I am in the board's decision tonight regarding the Hebron Board of Education. To echo some of the points John made, I say this as a DTC Chair and candidate for selectmen who has also supported good Republican candidates for office, one of them being Keith Cuttitt. I was proud to vote for Keith as a person, not for the party, because I knew that Keith cared very deeply about our children. Just a few weeks ago, this board talked about how it was committed to bipartisanship. And I think tonight was unfortunately, an example of party over person. So I find that disappointing. I hope that we can in the future utilize Dr. Heinem's talents and I wish Alex Crawford all the best on the board. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Gail?
It is eight thirty-five and I move that we adjourn.
Thank you all. Have a safe and happy weekend.